Nothing more for?
Never.
The January 27th meeting of the Hammond County Board of Commissioners. Let the record indicate that all three commissioners are present.
We seem to have jumped over the board of finance.
Yeah, you've jumped over the finance piece. We haven't gotten to your board of finance.
It's the one of course.
The executive.
Never mind.
Yeah. I apologize.
Okay. This time, I'll call to order the Board of Finance. Meaning, at this time, Susan Byers, if you could please come up and make your presentation.
Hello. Had another awesome, successful year in, you know, investing counting funds. We made a total of $22,375,304.69 in interest income.
Back to the good old days.
Yes, have seen some drops already this year, but hopeful to stay steady. We're running anywhere from 4% to 4.69. Already closed four of our not as well-performing accounts to move those funds somewhere better for 2025, but like to see these numbers stay where they are. If we could get Todd to stop spending my money.
So which banks are paying you the most, just from public information?
Highest banks right now are Lake City, Trust Indiana, Horizon, and Farmers.
Very good.
Great.
And we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any questions for Susan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn then?
Move to accept the report of Ms. Byers on last year's performance.
I will say there was a couple of typos on this, but I've already cleared those up with Jenny.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Dillinger.
So I guess I get to reopen the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, again, we'll open up the January 27th meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Let the record indicate that all three commissioners are present. If you would, I'd like to start out with the pledge of allegiance, if you stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is approval of the executive session memoranda of January 27th.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is approval amendments of January the 8th and January the 13th.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Highway, Mrs.?
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We have a very short agenda today. We have two items. First item is a conference with traffic state correspondence. This was from Lisa West, I'm sorry, on Atlantic Road.
Some of them, I'm glad we're in a person ready.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Second item is acceptance letter. It's a financial commitment letter. We have a community crossing grant application that's due the end of this month, so it begins the week. So we've come up with our next community crossings project, which is a pavement preservation project on Palillo Road, 96th up to the bridge at Geist Reservoir. Our financial, the project, construction cost for this is $3,020,000, and we are committing a local funding amount of $1,540,000.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That's all I have. I don't want Brad if you have any.
February 7th. I think two of you are not going to be here.
I'm happy to carry on.
We don't want her to go by herself. Sorry.
They're scared.
We're scared.
Well, in that case, I guess we will not have a meeting.
We won't have a meeting. No.
In that case, though, can we have maybe some time in the exec, as an exec session or work session possibly on the day?
Yes.
Yep.
We need to go over some.
Yep.
Project notifications on one of our projects.
Okay.
Can we expand? Let's go ahead and plan for that with exec by adding how much time in exec, do you think?
Uh.
Half hour?
Probably add a half hour.
And then shift our regular meeting back?
Fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
And we're going to have to do a comment.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And that's on February 10th, right?
Yes.
You'll be back. You'll be remote.
Yeah, I'll be remote.
Okay.
You're, just to clarify, you wanting a, I'll have 15 minutes exec session and start the.
You need to expand the exec session by one half hour.
EOC pushback 30 minutes.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else for Highway?
Yes, sir.
Let's move on to court administration. Jill Ackley.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We just have a new Superior Court floor public defender who is going to be joining us for 2005. Her name is Jasmine Armstrong from Banks and Brower, and so that's just what we have in front of you for signature today.
Jill, is this an addition or is she replacing?
She's replacing. Unfortunately, one of the attorneys who had signed on for 2025 is not able to do it, resigned for some, I'm not sure why.
Okay, that's, but is it the same money?
Correct.
Okay, I just didn't know whether our master list of public councils needs to be.
Yeah, it'll just, it would just substitute in Jasmine.
Okay, sounds good. So.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is community development block grant, Michelle Western money.
Good afternoon. Today I have before you a funding agreement between the county and the city of Carmel. It is for infrastructure improvement, storm drain, and sidewalk improvement in the Almond Newark neighborhoods. The total amount of CDBG funds going into the project is $429,271.81.
Again, it's getting harder and harder to consider that neighborhood as a faulty neighborhood, but by census.
Yeah, by census track it still is.
So.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is emergency management ABC. Chad, can you?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. For you today is a meal authorization for our feeding of our workers for the storm ops in our most recent blizzard, as well as three different civilian volunteer programs that go through for this year. The first one was a volunteer appreciation dinner where we actually give out awards for those volunteers who go above and beyond with their dedication and service in our volunteer service to emergency management. In the service of Hamilton County, we had one individual actually receive a presidential volunteer service award this year, so that was a pretty big deal, in excess of 400 hours of volunteer service. And then we had several others that meet different achievements throughout the year for training and volunteer service hours for different events throughout, that really enhanced our staffing within emergency management. The second item there was the places of worship, and part of our hardening, target hardening and our threat analysis is securing our places of worship within Hamilton County, trying to get all of the different faith-based organizations together in one time to talk about those perceived threats and allow us to share information about securing their facilities and how to plan for an eventuality of an event or an incident, whether it be man-made or natural, within their facility, as well as allow them an opportunity to voice their concerns on what they're scared about or what they fear, and then go from there and working with our partners with sheriff's officers or the individual police departments in those municipalities to help secure their facilities, and just basically being a facilitator for relationships and communications for our faith-based organizations and securing Hamilton County. And then the last one is the feeding of the volunteers for a large exercise in October where we actually go through and test our plans and get the volunteers who have been training all year and actually activate them within the exercises to show that their training has paid off and that they can perform the duties as assigned and that they're part of the larger plans for response for critical incidents and emergencies within Hamilton County. And each one of those, we use the food as not only reward, but kind of a, the conversation starters to get everybody to socialize and actually get there and share information about their strengths, weaknesses, challenges, and concerns, and get them to talk through all that when we go through the exercises. So that was presented for you today for a request for authorization for those food items.
Yeah, I would note that the volunteer hours are routinely used as local share on grants. It's phenomenal the value of the time our volunteers put in.
Yes, ma'am.
And the faith-based exercise, I'll call it almost an exercise, given the attacks we've had on faith-based groups. I've attended the first one or two, and they're very, very helpful.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Motion, motion to approve.
Sir.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Chad, I just wanted to commend you and on all the snow and ice emergencies that we've had over the past couple of weeks. You and your team, outstanding communication with all of the appropriate elected officials and different organizations was outstanding.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Good.
Thank you. Appreciate your support and leadership, and wouldn't go without recognizing the Sheriff's Department, Lee, Brad, and also Steve Wood and all the teams together. It was a team effort, and everybody worked very well together, and hopefully we won't have to do that much more this year, but it's great to know that team works very well. We've got February, so we'll see.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Governance, risk, and compliance divisions, do you guys forward?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Today I'm joined by Rebecca Schott. Just wanted to bring her up here with me. We have two items on today's agenda as of the first of the year. Rebecca is now going to be serving as our risk manager, and so she'll be handling the second item on today's agenda with a liability claim, and you'll see her in the future bring those forward. That being said, the first item on today's agenda is that we are here, last meeting, Kristen Walker had presented the proposed liability renewal package. It's since been discussed, and we would just recommend and request the board's approval to accept the package as recommended.
Some of the.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. And then I will, there's probably 12 to 14 signatures that'll be required from this year's president. Would you like me to bring it for now or hold till later?
You can bring him down, I'll sign him as.
Perfect. And then Rebecca, go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon. As Stephen said, I am bringing forth the request for authorization of payment from the liability trust. Our department handled an internal claim for an event that happened on November 12th, 2024. A county employee was backing their assigned county vehicle in their driveway when they struck their privately-owned vehicle. Repairs were completed by Miller's Auto Body, and we are seeking authorization for payment of the invoice of $3,948.38.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
I don't know if you're ready for me.
Next item on the, sorry, is Chris Martin's. Go ahead, please.
I got four items. On the first one, I want to talk about it just a little bit. I noticed when I was looking through that, the statement of work references Superior Court, and that's actually for the auditor's office, so we've asked them to send a correction on that. They will not change the dollar amounts in the statement of work at all, but we will have an updated copy that references the auditor rather than Superior Court. So I'd like to go ahead and request approval on that, just knowing that it will change the name.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The second item is just our cognizant support that we have. This is the same support agreement we had last year. It's just called lean-on support. It allows us to open up tickets regarding any kind of HR payroll or finance questions we may have that we can't answer.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion.
Go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Third item is a purchase for, of a copier. It's for the health department. That item will be purchased and added to our existing contract for support.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The last item is from Verizon. One of the letters is an annual agreement we sign with Verizon every year. It's just an awards thing they need a signature on. The other purchase order is something Steve Dirks worked on for the sheriff's office. It upgrades eligible devices to an iPhone 15, plus gives an OtterBox case along with that one purchase price. And so he suggested that we look at eligible devices down here, and Verizon extended that offer to us as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Gary Duncan, surveyor.
I don't see him out here.
Okay, I'm on hold then. Commissioner Committee reports.
I have none.
I have none, but I would note that today is the National Holocaust Survivor Remembrance Day, and with the turmoil that's going on in this country, I think it's a lesson learned that autocrats are easy to create and cause hideous, hideous results, so we should be ever vigilant that we don't repeat history.
Okay, thank you. Attorney.
Yes, I have a few things. The first one is for the.
Stephen. Go ahead.
Is for the approval of, for condemnation, parcel 54 for the US 31 infrastructure project, Baker's Corner Water Sewer Face 1. So I have that for your approval today.
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next item I have is at the last meeting, it's what the, it was for probation, I believe, with Madonna. It was the contract with Spire. We amended it, made sure it said the right name, our goodwill of Indiana, and corrected that Madonna's CNN, she's good within, so I just have that for your review and approval today as well.
Move to.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next item I have is a letter of support for AT&amp;T to the state of Indiana for their B program. They are applying for state funds for broadband services within Hamilton County. This letter does not commit Hamilton County to any funds. How the scoring works with these providers is that it needs to show that they have support from the local municipalities, and apparently is a score plus for them, but again, doesn't commit the county to anything, and at this point in time, I don't believe there's any conversations about the county committing funds to outside of saying we support having broadband services brought to Hamilton County. And Chris, I believe you made some comments too, and those are incorporated with this new addition as well, so I have that for your signature and approval today as well.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next two are, I don't believe there's any action. One, for our airport authority, just to comply with the political affiliations, the appointment of Justin Clebiger is considered as an independent, which then at that point in time, you'll have the correct party affiliations for that board. Do you need any action on that mic or just make a note for it?
I think a motion to appoint him as an independent would be appropriate.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The last item I have is introduce Andrew Upchurch, who's one of our new assistant county attorneys. He comes for us, comes to us from Kylinian Gray, was previously at Travelers in City of Indianapolis, so he knows Adam quite well, but we are slowly going to have the largest wall firm based out of Hamilton County, slowly but surely, but Andrew will be here, and he'll be helping out with a wide ranging of things, but I just want to introduce him to the board and everyone else, so you'll see him around from now on.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And that is all that we have.
Okay, let's back up to surveyor Gary Duncan. You weren't here when we called you the first time, Gary.
Yes. The, I was actually thinking I should have come down, that this might move a little faster than I was on the schedule, but you should have before you approval to move an easement acquisition to condemnation. The drainage board voted this morning, approved to move this to the commissioners' meeting for approval. This is related to an easement acquisition on the J.S. McCarty Drain in Clarksville. We are hopeful, though, that this will not be required, that we will be able to settle with the property owner without it needing to go to condemnation, but this will reserve our ability to do that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director of Administration.
I mean, it's not grateful, but I.
No, I agree.
Thank you. I have several items for you today. First off, I'm presenting for your review, approval, and the signature, Commissioner Hare Grant. I have SRF disbursement form related to the November 5th, 2024 invoice, coming out of $778,467.47. Actually, I forgot that. It's not the November 17th, November 5th, it's for the January 8th, 2025 invoice, in $778,467.47. That requires Commissioner Hare Grant's signature. I would ask for a motion to approve that and authorization for signing.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Second item on the agenda, I'm presenting for your review, consideration, approval. A request that's been made by Chris Dice, Director of Hamilton County Parks Department, requesting the extension of buying to utilize PTO. Be granted to employee Kyle Socks due to extenuating circumstances outlined in his letter. Kyle Socks currently lost 37.50 PTO hours on 12/29/2025, 59 days after his 9/29/24 anniversary date. Chris Dice is requesting that Mr. Socks be granted an extension of 60 additional days from today's date to utilize those unused PTO hours, and he assures you that he'll work with Mr. Socks to make sure that gets taken care of.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion.
Did you include his letter?
I believe, yes.
Did you say that I did? Okay.
Actually.
Why did, why did he lose all that PTO time?
Uh, it was.
Well, I just thought it was his letter, but it's actually Chris's. Due to staff shortages, qualified applicants.
It was Chris's.
That's, no, that's part-time.
Projects that required extended work hours throughout the year, and in an effort to not have this financial impact, many of those hours were taken as comp time, and so he was unable to use that PTO time.
Any further comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I mean, again, it's, we're just pushing back when we allow comp time extensions, trittily. So I just think we need to take it in the confines of the policy answer.
Motion carries, Sue.
Thank you. Item number three, presenting for review, consideration, approval. Request that's been made by Chris Dice, Director of Hamilton County Parks Department, requesting the board commissioner grant the request of Parks Department to allow part-time seasonal staff to work over the established 29-hour part-time maximum during the busy summer season. This is similar or identical to a request that's been made by the Parks Department over the last several years, and he provides a document that, a request that you sign up, related to that affirmation that you so granted.
There a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Item number four, presenting for your review, consideration, approval. A request that's been made by Susan Peterson-Luise Hanny of the Hamilton County 4-H Fairgrounds for new extension. The request is to modify the previously proved alcohol policy to remove the word spirits from the language contained in the alcohol permit application and replace it with the term or terms champagne or sparkling wine. This change would more clearly delineate the policy that the 4-H staff had been utilizing and living under, and remove any confusion that might have been proven by the use of the term spirits, which obviously many people might consider being powdered liquor, and they have not allowed powdered liquor in the fairgrounds.
Is that the policy we approved?
Mm-hmm.
So it's just beer and wine?
Yeah.
I didn't realize we weren't allowing spirits.
Some of.
They apparently had not ever, they had always, their interpretation had been that beer, wine, and they had interpreted spirits, for whatever reason, to mean champagne and or sparkling wine, and have always operated under that, that theory in practice.
Do they not drink? I just don't know how you can convert spirits to.
The other way around.
I think it's sort of, if they, if that's what they want to do, I think.
Apparently that's what they've been doing, and their preference is to keep with that, and this would eliminate any potential.
Well, I understand, but it's a change of policy on our end, because if it said beer, wine, and spirits, it was a three-way license, not a two-way license. So.
I don't know what to say. You?
As long as it doesn't affect the event rental, I mean, that's why I would want it to.
Believe me, they're, they're full.
If they're full, that's fine.
They've apparently not had any issues.
If there's none issue.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion?
Some moved.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. I'll notify them.
You certainly felt the drainer's in the front.
Presenting for your review, consideration, approval. A request that's been made by Jason LaMaster, Director of Hamilton County Health Department, requesting the Board of Commissioners reappoint Dr. Bradley Sutter to the Hamilton County Board of Health. His appointment was previously not listed on the Board of Commissioner appointees to boards and. boards and committees list, but as Jenny and I have worked together, she's going to be revising that so that this appointment is now included, so we would ask you for a motion to reappoint Dr. Bradley Sutter, who is willing to continue serving.
So.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, presenting for your review, consideration, approval of vacancy currently remains on the Hamilton County North Library Board. This item was tabled at your last meeting. Since that time, Susan Sparks, who was a recommendation to fill the board position, has completed the online application. I would therefore ask that you appoint Susan Sparks to the Hamilton County North Library Board.
So is this recommendation coming from the Director of Hamilton North or a different recommendation?
Mark, I don't know if that.
I don't know.
I, I know that. I know that, I believe the library board person is aware of it and has commented on it, but I don't know if it's directly.
What comment?
Just in that she had included an email.
This was the recommendation that came from Emily Pearson?
Yes.
Originally, when she was asked.
Okay, I'm just real sensitive about the havoc we can create with not vetting our people.
Well, we can table it and have her come in.
Please, move to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I mean, I trust Emily, but we all have different opinions, so I want to make sure we're aligned.
I have to present for your review, consideration, approval. A request has been made by David Hyatt in Kalinga, York, from the Review Hospital, requesting that Dan Stevens be reappointed to the Review Board. This reappointment was not dealt with at the last meeting because the Board of Commissioners listed capable of Mr. Stevens' appointment expires at the end of 2026. The hospital, however, believes that the appointment was expired at the end of 2024 due to the fact that Mr. Stevens was appointed to fulfill the term of Stephen Holt, which was scheduled to expire on 12/31/2024. In order to clarify Mr. Stevens' appointment, I would request that you reappoint him effective 1/1/2025 for a new four-year term to expire 12/31.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I thought we agreed, Dan. I know we had to sort of bend back.
Does she feel that's a problem?
I don't think so.
Never mind.
Do you want to make a motion to take it?
Can't, because I haven't applied yet. We haven't went through all of the applications yet.
I see.
Okay.
Okay.
The only other item I have is, was not under revision, that just came in, I just tweeted today, Menekego grant agreement for six vehicles that Commissioner Harebrandt has been also involved with, has arrived. I forwarded it to legal just a little earlier today and requested review. I would ask that you, pending legal approval to approve it and authorize Commissioner Harebrandt to sign it so that it can be signed as soon as legal approves it, because we've been waiting on these six vehicles for some time now from Menekego.
Some of.
Second.
Mr. Stacey? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. As soon as legal gives the AOK on that contract, we'll make sure that Commissioner Harebrandt gets word to be able to sign off on the doctor's time. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Chair.
Good afternoon. You do not have anything for the agenda today.
I have something for you. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Of all the things that's been on the news with Presidents Trump stating that they were going to remove illegal people, and some sheriff's department saying they won't enforce that, where do we stay a little bit?
We absolutely comply with that, and, you know, immigrants that are committing crimes that come to our jail, we obviously report those, and we assist any way we can with that. So absolutely, we would comply, and it's really at the jail level. So when they've committed a crime and they're incarcerated, then that status is looked into, and then we report that if appropriate, if they're illegal.
So now you'll be turning it over to the Feds?
Well, we report that to them, and it's up to them to show up with a detainer.
And that's not really a change of what you've been doing for years, correct?
No. We are currently looking at a program called 287G, which would allow our officers to have the ability to start that process and serve those detainers, because currently if ICE does not show up in the time, then we just have to release them. But 287G would allow our staff to start the process of serving that detainer.
But that'll increase costs in the county. Do we get reimbursed?
Yes, so if we keep them, we absolutely would be, I guess, reimbursed or paid for housing them if that happens. So we're just now in the early stages of looking into that.
What's the difference between what's going on with Rakita from a state standpoint, up in the lawsuit with St. Joe County?
Yeah, my understanding of that is they're not reporting anytime that there's someone who's an illegal immigrant, they're not reporting that, and we do that already.
Okay, okay.
Is there anything that we have to do as an administrative body to enable you to detain these people, or is that sheriff's call? Explain it.
It's a sheriff's call, but at the same time, we've just started communicating with ICE reference, the 287G program. And so what we have is some meetings on that, and we'll find out a little bit more about that coming up.
I'm more concerned about costs.
Absolutely.
All right, next on the agenda is auditor.
Good afternoon.
Do.
I have for your approval and signature, clerk's monthly report.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Treasurer's monthly report.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Acceptance of bonds and letters of credit.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Payroll claims?
Some of.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.